Good evening and welcome to the May 15th Media Borough Council Meeting. We're here at the Joan Hagan Council Chambers. I'd like to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to our formal business, I have a couple of items I need to share. First of all, after this evening's meeting, we will be holding an executive session to discuss a legal matter. And also, for anyone in media who is registered in a party, there will be a primary election on Tuesday, so I encourage you to exercise your franchise. 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the polls will be open. We have some very important local races that are on the ballot this year. First item of business is the approval of minutes from our two meetings in April. First item is our April 3rd, 2025 workshop meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the April 3rd, 2025 workshop meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up are the minutes from the April 17th, 2025 council meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of -- I'm sorry, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the April 17th, 2025 council meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries unanimously. It is now the first of two opportunities for public comment and privilege of the floor. If you are happy to share your name and your address before you address us, that would be wonderful. Another option is to send an email to comments@mediaborough.com, and I'll check with our administrative manager, Karen?
I don't know if this is on.
Ms. Rupino? Nope, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to address council? Please stand at the microphone and just share your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Vince D'Amico, 28 Vernon Lane, Garnet Valley. I've also lived and worked in Media Borough for better part of 20 years, downtown State Street, primarily in the restaurant industry. Currently, I do sit on the Board of the Media Business Authority, active as the treasurer. And part of my reason here tonight, I guess, aside the bio, would be, upon joining the MBA, was to try and give some, a voice to a little bit of our local restaurants and restaurant representation. I know that there is a, kind of a, issue at hand here with the proposed styrofoam ban and the component of black plastics. That is something that we have discussed with our businesses, as far as how we can navigate this, find a cost-neutral alternative. And I am definitely for the styrofoam component. I also, you know, recognize and thank the EAC for a lot of work they've done to make Media Borough, I guess, you know, a frontrunner in this type of legislation. Also, you know, we are a example to the rest of the county, maybe even the rest of the state, on a lot of these things, as far as doing our part. The issues and concerns, I guess I would have as a local business owner, and also a lot of my colleagues that are in the restaurant industry, the black plastic component part of this was a little bit of a surprise to us. We have really worked with the, as far as myself, business owners, and the MBA have also worked with identifying what restaurants will be affected by the styrofoam. Not too many. One of our beloved ice cream shops, we figured that out. The plastic, just right now, is a little bit, it's a lot to digest, and with, I guess, you know, economic uncertainty right now, with a little bit of supply chain issues, we're just not sure as far as, you know, if we can find a, at the very least, like I call it, a neutral replacement for these items. Also, from a operator's standpoint, it has to perform in the field. It can't just be, you know, an alternative. Moving forward with the styrofoam ban, but saving the black plastic for another time, that we can clearly find out a little more information as far as resources for business. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. D'Amico. Absolutely. I was going to say if anyone in council would like to --
Mr. D'Amico, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Over here. Hi. You had, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your perspective on this, as a business owner in media, so it's valued very much. I'm wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on performance of black plastic. What does that mean?
So, when trying to find a suitable replacement, let's take, I can use the plastic bag and the straw ordinance, which was something, you know, I am personally all for. I think it's important that we need to do our part, and like be an example for the next generation. Plastic bag, for example, we did a lot of, you know, research, like what can we have? Alternatives, paper. I know that the council talked a lot about, as far as, you know, do you want to charge your customers? Do we provide it, not provide it? A lot of us ordered paper bags, is kind of the way we went. And then, if you weren't educated on, as far as what number paper bag you should order, you end up with a bag that's too thin, the bag's too small. I, myself, personally, you know, would have a customer with a six-pack of cans rolling down the street because it broke out of the paper bag, so we reorder another one, give that to the bagel shop, maybe they can use it. So, performance-wise, as far as, we're all used to, we've been used to these containers for so long, and we know that we can store them in dry storage, it's not going to matter if it gets wet on the floor, it's not going to crack when we try and put the lid on, as far as, like, if it's a clear plastic or something, your lid cracks, ends up in the customer's food. We know that it's not going to spill or leak. For years, you know, restaurant industries, we use that classic clamshell container, it's tried and true, it doesn't leak. So just trying to find something that is not only cost-effective, environmentally friendly, but can perform, that you're not going to spill it on the front seat of your car when you're driving home, I guess.
Sure, makes sense.
So it's not just looking at, you know, spreadsheet or a catalog and saying, this is a 26-ounce container, this is the cost, it's really having to get in your hand. And for us, a lot of times, you ask for samples, you don't get them, you have to order a case, and you either just eat the price of the case, or it worked out for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would maybe ask our liaison to the EAC, there is an effort currently underway to do what you have asked, as far as education and research, so I want to turn it over to Councilmember Gelman.
Oh, I know that the EAC has looked at alternatives as far as, like, white or clear plastic, so I was just curious at how you felt about using, you said the clear you didn't think was as strong.
That is something I've started to look into. Some of them aren't as strong, but really, even going that route is just, I mean, I believe that we have to get rid of all of them eventually.
Yeah.
That's my personal opinion.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, for the business standpoint, is right now, is what else can come along that's even better, so we're not just going right to the clear plastic.
So.
Also, some education on, you know, I myself, until recently, didn't realize what made it harder as far as recycling from black plastic to clear plastic, just not something that I looked at.
Right, 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 right.
You know?
As of right now, not only is the black plastic environmentally more toxic for everybody to be using, but it's also not easily recycled at our recycling plant. It can be, but it's not often done so. So, for the twofold of the toxicity, as well as the fact that it's not really getting recycled, we're trying to push out the idea that there are alternatives that are not black. I've noticed that some of the things that I've bought recently from the grocery store, like Stouffer's Mac and Cheese and Trader Joe's Frozen Indian, they both used to have black plastic, and now they're both turned out in these, like, very thick, like, card, not card.
It's like a --
It's like a --
I know what you're speaking of.
Board, but like --
It's a quarter.
Fiber board, not fiber board.
Laminate type. I don't know what you're talking about.
I know what you're speaking about. Actually, 320 Market uses a very nice bowl. If you go in there, they will see it.
Yeah.
That research, that is more of like a fiber-based alternative.
I just mentioned that because it does feel like it will be, as you say, like, down the road, it feels like a lot of these plastics, whether it be, like, black, white, clear. But for right now, at least, the toxicity is much lower in white and clear, and can be recycled. So that's one of the reasons why the EAC wanted to bring that. But we're not trying to push this, we're just exploring and talking about it with our businesses and so forth at this moment. So I definitely appreciate your feedback.
Oh, definitely. I think that that would be, as far as, you know, just the education, like, maybe a little more education on it would help us, you know, we want to make the decision, and I think it could almost organically, people will start to just stop using them.
Yeah, maybe.
And then, you know, we still can put something in place, but, yeah, just.
I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the other things that was on the table, which is not something that we've discussed totally yet because we're not there, was having a two different, like, times for, like, styrofoam in, like, 12 months, and the plastic in, like, 18 months for enforcement, that kind of thing. So to give everybody more time, so that it doesn't feel rushed, or pushed, or jumped on.
I guess that would be, I guess that is definitely what I would be asking for here, is like, a little more time.
Right.
As far as, you know, everybody wants to talk about trade wars, supply chains, tariffs, like, right now, our options are limited for what we can even get. And that's what I would hope, that a little more time, there may be, you know, there could be new products coming to the market.
Yeah.
And then hopefully, you know, things could settle down a little bit, and we can get our hands on some of these products.
Yeah, and maybe the borough can help with some of those samples that you were saying, so that restaurants aren't having to, like, eat a case of.
Well, I know that's what it is. There's almost one main supplier that, for Media Borough, I know that a lot of restaurants use, as far as unless they're, you know, going online and looking for something else. But a lot of us use some of the same suppliers, you know, because it can be, like, you know, I can call up Arianna, like, hey, I forgot to order my cups, she got this for me, or again, like, yeah, give it back to me next week. So, yeah, just a little bit more information on it would be probably helpful, and that's something I'm willing to help with, it's just, you know, was a little bit of a shock, I guess.
No one wants to shock anyone. Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you so much again. I just want to clarify a couple of things. There's nothing on our agenda going forward currently that we have in this vein. EAC, with council's advice, is looking at an education campaign first and foremost to get that information out to you. And similar to what we did when we went through with the bags and the straws.
Yeah.
There are going to be meetings between members of the MBA and the EAC. When we did that two years ago, or three years ago, already, or four years ago, whatever length of time it was.
Yeah, definitely.
Whatever length of time it was, it was tremendous to bring those two groups together that you would think are at cross purposes, but they found common ground. And we hope that the same will happen here. So your feedback is very welcome, and I'm very encouraged to hear that the restaurants talk to each other and share things.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
That's great. I wish it was happening at my school where I teach.
Yeah.
Anyhow, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak and address council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to our borough manager's report. Ms. Forman.
Good evening, Mr. President, and thank you. I just have a couple of small items, and I partially shared during workshop, but just wanted to update everyone, the public and you all as well. We are actively in the middle of our comprehensive plan outreach process. Our website is live, it's ourmedia2035.com, ourmedia2035.com. And we have been everywhere that we can be to share this message about our survey. It's in our newsletter, our social media, we have had, our consultants have gone to pop-up events at the Easter egg hunt, and we passed out, they passed out a lot of information to residents. So far, we have over 300 survey results, which is encouraging, but it will be open for another two weeks, so we really want to encourage, we're trying to do a last push. So make sure that your neighbors, if you can share with your neighbors and make sure that they are actually filling out the survey, we would greatly appreciate it. Two more weeks for the comprehensive plan survey. And that's for the community survey. There's also a business owner survey that we're going to leave over, it's on a different timeline, that's going to be open for another month or so. Secondly, I mentioned two weeks ago about just emergency medical services and everything that's happening with the closing of Crozier and all the EMS units that were, the ambulance units that were attached to that. We are certainly going to be feeling those effects. I just wanted to share again that we are constantly talking with our neighbors, we had a regional meeting at Nether Providence, we were exploring different options and long-term solutions for a regional model, whether that is an authority or a nonprofit model. So I will certainly keep you guys all updated, all updated on that. And that concludes my report for the moment.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our manager? Hearing none, we will move on now to the birthday boy.
The birthday boy.
It's time for our engineer's report. I will not, I will not sing, but he needs a hat, or like, some sort of celebratory.
Thank you, Mr. President.
But you have to start your report by telling us how old you are.
It is a good one. I am 50 years old today.
Oh, it's a big one. Congratulations, Mr. Mattson.
People said, what are you doing? I said, I'm celebrating with the fine people of Media Borough, they say thank you.
You know how to party.
That's exactly right.
Happy to serve. Couple of updates on some capital projects, again. So Plum Street is open, there's still some final things that have to happen at the site. We have been coordinating with PICO. PICO has everything they need, it's just a matter of getting their technicians out in the field to energize the site. Again, I know this is, there are a number of events that are coming up. I've been in touch with Dave Fairman, and it certainly would be great to have the site energized. So this is something that is on our, one of our top priorities. There's some additional furniture that is to be infilled, some additional, from the two umbrellas that are underway as far as delivery. And then, I think that there is the issue of the shade structure. So there's still some infill, but the site is open, it's in use. I've been in touch with Mr. Fairman and Mr. Green about some of the maintenance issues at the site that have become topical, again, but we're still pushing, we're still actively meeting once a week to make sure that we address all of the final punchless items. The contractor and the design team are still actively involved in making sure that we deliver a successful project. So, again, we're open, we're just not completely finished with this project. Are there any questions on Plum Street?
Any questions?
It looks great.
Yeah, fabulous.
I can't wait to see the final product.
Mm-hmm. Can I?
You're the best birthday present.
It would be.
You can dance on the water structure.
Yes, yes. Don't give him any idea.
Our Ridge Road project, again, is still in final quality control. There's a push to get this posted to PennDOT, it's being routed through PennDOT's ECMS system, which is not our PennBid, but we use commonly for our capital projects. It's an internal system that is used to get a certain net of qualified contractors through PennDOT's system, again. So that project, funded by a grant, will be a nice improvement to the area for stormwater and traffic on North Olive and Ridge Road. Philip Green is open, again, feel free to pop down there, enjoy the beautiful new park, it looks great, the flowers and everything have really come to life in the springtime. Our road program, our local road program, which is funded by Our Local Fuels, has been sent to PennDOT. We're just awaiting some final comments from our local municipal services rep. I don't anticipate anything out of the ordinary, that project is a routine maintenance project that happens every year. Again, we see improvements to streets, we see improvements to the accessible curb cuts, pretty straightforward. We have received the survey for the two traffic calming components. So over at the Holly House, we're doing that rapid rectangular flashing beacon, the plans are about 70 or 85 percent. Again, so they'll be submitted through the PennDOT system for permitting, and probably next month or next council workshop, be looking for permission to advertise. So it'll be an agenda item for next month, advertisement on the traffic calming five bay over the Holly House with the rapid rectangular flashing beacon, it'll be a nice improvement in that area. And then likewise, Jefferson and Lemon, which is a stormwater slash improvement funded by our friends at the county for CDBG. And so we did receive the survey plans, their plans are about 75, 80, 80 percent complete, they get routed back to transportation for another look, and then we'll be requesting permission to advertise. So a lot of activity here in media, and again, if there's any questions, feel free to let me know. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for engineer? Hearing none, we'll move on to our next report, the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing until our executive session.
Thank you. It's not your birthday too, is it?
No.
No, okay, just checking.
I was actually at Nether Providence. The leading chair kind of said, when I got to my board, he's like, why are you forgetting to tell us? So we'll take your back.
Yeah, we're a little friendlier here. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Moving on now to our mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, coming up is Memorial Day, week and a half. The time is 10:00 AM, because all the, the only time the bands can come out, they have other things to do. So we're doing it then. If there's rain, we will go to the townhouse. Again, we did that a couple of years ago, the only time that we did not have a parade. So, join us. Help me, where's your husband?
I'm sure he'll be here.
He'll be there? Good, okay.
I'll help.
Let's see, the logs, the April logs, let's see, 42 alarms, last month, 39 assistant police, 65 assistant to the public, disorderly conduct, 13, I was three of them, domestic 12, harassment 5, and a couple more. I'm sure they're very important. Public drunkenness 5, 45 motor vehicle violations, 63 medical emergencies, never seen that before, and traffic accidents 34. Quite a few.
That's for April.
That's one of the most we ever had.
That's for April?
Yeah, just April.
I would be --
Not 31 days.
True. I would be remiss without really shouting out our police department for handling a very difficult situation earlier this month. They worked with Philadelphia Police, and three perpetrators who did some terrible things in our borough have now been arrested, and are now behind bars. So I want to make sure that we mention that as well. And the mayor asked me to share this. Saturday, May 17th, which is two days for a while, there will be a complimentary Veterans Alliance special price ticket event at the Media Theater for Grease. 6:00 PM private reception in the Crystal Room, 7 o'clock is showtime. Anyone can use the code VETERANS to receive $35 tickets, which includes the reception. You can call the theater and just mention Veterans Night, and it's the 25th year that they have had a Veterans Night honoring 82 combat veterans in the borough, so, pretty wonderful. My wife saw this last week and thought it was great, so, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions for the mayor? None. Hearing none, we'll move on to our council committee reports. We'll begin with transportation, Councilmember Trey Herman. Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a few things tonight. I will start off with our traffic calming education component. This month's topic is safe crosswalks, safe intersections. Media Borough has over 110 intersections, that's over 400 stop sites. We have also 13 signalized intersections and two school zones. Most of these intersections have crosswalks where pedestrians and vehicles use the same areas. From time to time, pedestrians decide to cross at mid-block without making use of dedicated sidewalks. To add to the traffic, pedestrians frequently are focused on handheld devices such as phones or tablets, so dangerous. If you are a pedestrian, please stop and look both ways before crossing the streets and use the crosswalks. Your phone does have an off button, please consider using it occasionally. If everyone is distracted, then who is paying attention? If you are driving, please be mindful that pedestrians are not always aware of your vehicle, please slow down and proceed with caution. Both pedestrians and drivers are responsible for safe streets, please be careful. Carrying on, part of that will also be in our first-ever traffic calming education video, which I've seen, and it's looking very nice, and I want to, special thank yous to President Pekoff and Zach?
My son did it all.
Okay.
I gave him the stuff, told him what we wanted, and it was done, so.
Certainly. But also, I want to thank Councilmember Washington for her expert videography skills, and our junior council person for her expert attention to detail in crossing streets and not being hit by cars in the process.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm not going to say it. Moving on, first item up I have is the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order to JMT in the amount of $12,215 for a Phase II bog turtle study for the Third Street Bridge Project. Let me make that a form of motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? This is one of those items that sort of caught us all off guard, so I would turn it over to our manager to explain a little bit about this expense.
Sure. So bog turtles are endangered species, and it was required to have a study to make sure that the location that we're talking about does not have bog turtles there. Our consultants knew about that and included a certain level of study, they completed that, and we're told by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that they need to do a deeper level of study. So they're going to be doing four different forings, which take four to six hours, and goes a certain level of depth, and they have to do it between, I believe it's, well, between April, mid-April and end of June, and so, because of the timing related to bog turtles. So they are putting in this change order for that process.
Thank you.
I blame Master Splinter for not making these bog turtles ninja turtles instead. He really dropped the ball on that one.
It is important for us to be aware of environmental concerns, it does, you know, throw a monkey wrench into things, or a bog turtle wrench, as it were.
I feel like I remember this happening at the Hyands Refuge Center a few years back when they were doing stuff there, too.
They did the same thing, yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving a change order to JMT in the amount of $12,215 for a Phase II bog turtle study for the Third Street Bridge Project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the borough engineer to go out to bid for the Ridge Road project. There's not much more to say on that, though I will ask our borough manager to add any additional details.
Yeah, I think our engineer had mentioned it a little bit during his report, but we're moving along in the final stages of QA for that project, and we're waiting from PennDOT to get some final approvals for their review for the Ridge Road project, which is going to provide some green infrastructure, some sidewalks, some traffic calming to that area of Ridge Road and Olive Street. And once all that moves forward, we need to move very quickly, so that we can get it, this project, in the ground this year. And so I spoke to both our borough engineer, but also our engineer on the project, Mike Galante, and they just requested that we have the authorization from council, so that when we get the approvals from PennDOT, we can move quickly. Is there anything to add, Mr. Engineer?
No, I don't think so. I think that covers it. Again, that project is funded with a grant, it's consistent with our stormwater management master plan, and then has elements of traffic calming in it. So it's kind of a cross-dimensional plan, it'll be a nice improvement for that area.
Thank you. I need to make a form of motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing our borough engineer to go out to bid for the Ridge Road project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on, this is not a motion, we're just, that's open for discussion, for the draft ordinance permitting 10-minute free parking in the State Street District.
Yes, I just wanted to update you briefly, because we all spoke about it during workshop, and then the administration went back, met with our solicitor, both Mr. Scott and also Megan, and just because of the language of the ordinance, there are some slight tweaks that we just wanted you to be aware of. There is a draft ordinance in Dropbox, two major things. One is related to the actual geographic location of the State Street District. Zone 1, which is what we were talking about, allowing 10-minute free parking through the app, owns, and Zone 1 is actually bound by Gailey and Lemon, not Monroe to Orange. And so, for the, like, for the ease of the ordinance language, it makes most sense to allow this free parking in this entire zone. So it's only like a half block on one side and a block from Orange to Lemon on the other side. But, so that's slightly different than what we talked about, is the geographic location. The second thing is that within the State Street District, we have what are called Quick Stop. So there are meters that are out in front of restaurants, well, businesses in general that are on the corner. And it's actually separate, even though it's in, on State Street and in the district, it's actually a separate zone. There's, it's Zone 4 and they're like, Quick Stop, right now they say 15 minutes. Say 15 minutes on the meter. And it's a max of 15 minutes for those spaces. There's only somewhere between six and eight of them in the entire district. But what we didn't want to have is the confusion of having 10-minute free parking with a 15-minute meter and having it be very confusing. So what we are recommending is to make both Zone 1 and Zone 4, which include the Quick Stop, all 10 minutes. Zone 4 would be 10 minutes on those individual meters. And then if you happen to use your app, you can still get 10 minutes free, but if not, you have to put a quarter in for your 10 minutes. So, we did have Dave Fairman on the call with us, as well as administration and the solicitors. And we talked with him about the value, and I think he agreed about the value of having, it could be clear and consistent, so we can message that to our business community and they can message it to their customers. So, the ordinance itself is something that you all be voting on next month. And you have a draft right now, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the changes.
Thank you. I would also like to note that this is one of those instances where we are hearing from our business community and responding to one of the things that they requested. They came to us and asked for this, and we looked at it and we came up with a way to make it work, so. Thank you all for all your work, Trey and the committee.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, Zone 4, those six to eight parking spots, are those all at meters?
Yes.
Are they also all on the apps?
So, they are, yes, they will be available on the apps.
Okay. Because our 15, or 10 minutes is only going to be available through the app, right?
10 minutes free will be only available through the app.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none?
Thank you. My final item is Resolution Number 2025-27, asking the legislature to support public transportation funding, which I will read a section of the resolution. I will not be reading the entire thing at this time. Whereas SEPTA is a key driver of economic growth, a robust transit system attracts businesses, creates jobs, and stimulates local economies. It enhances the region's appeal to investors and supports workforce mobility, connecting people to job opportunities, healthcare appointments, boosting productivity, and transports Media Borough residents as they commute to work. Therefore, be it resolved that Media Borough Council strongly supports efforts to establish permanent, dedicated, sustainable, non-regressive funding sufficient to restore service for the entire SEPTA network, including the Media Wawa Line, and ultimately to expand service and achieve a frequent, safe, reliable system for all riders. Let me make all that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second. Any discussion on the matter? I would simply like to thank Councilmember Washington for bringing this to our attention. And if you may or may not know, Councilmember Washington spoke at a rally for SEPTA several weeks ago quite eloquently with our state representative and others. SEPTA is a critical part of our borough's success, so.
Yep, it's definitely a tool of success for a lot of businesses in town. Because when you're on the trolley, you do notice that people who work at a lot of the restaurants and other shops on State Street use this, use the trolley to get to work. And without this, and like, less frequency is just really harder. It's just a lot harder for these businesses to become successful. And also for our seniors and other people who need access to healthcare, public transportation is that access to healthcare. So, it's really important for the legislature to move forward with the funding.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-27, asking legislature to support public transportation funding, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Herman? Hearing none, we'll move on to properties and public works. Councilmember Joy Washington, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements tonight. I just have one item of business, and that is Resolution Number 2025-28. That's the submission of grant application to DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for improvements to Boral Field, more specifically improvements to the tennis court. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-28, the submission of a grant application to DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for improvements to Boral Field, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Washington? Hearing none, we will now move on to finance and media business authority. Our council vice president, Liz Romaine, Ms. Romaine.
Thank you, President Pekoff. A couple of liaison announcements for the media business authority. If you had the pleasure of being here on Wednesday of last week, not only was it the first night of Dining Under the Stars, but it was also the kickoff of the now annual Delco Gives event. And, you know, over time, there's been this really great valuable partnership between the media business authority and the Foundation for Delaware County. The night was beautiful, and the two events together just were really great. There was an extensive amount of media coverage. I believe it got covered on all four major stations in KYW and everywhere you might have read about it if you weren't fortunate enough to be there. I'd just like to thank all the borough officials for participating in the ribbon-cutting ceremony and supporting the event overall. It was a really great kickoff to the season, and separately, the foundation generated over $2 million in money for local nonprofits. And all that money is, you know, nonprofits that are operating in Delaware County, so that was really exciting. Last night was not such a great night for Dining Under the Stars. It did get canceled, but that is the nature of this 22-week event. So, please, if you get a chance, go on a Wednesday night, since it's a really lovely event if you've never been. Also, the media business authority, once a month, is going to be doing Dancing Under the Stars at Dining Under the Stars, which is going to be at the intersection of State Street and Veteran's Square. That's going to be beginning Wednesday, May 28th, once a month throughout the year. A lot of interested folks are going to be teaching dancing, and so, you know, if you have two left feet or whatever, it's fine. No judgment. Come on out, it'll be really fun. Or, you know, grab a beer or drink at one of our wonderful restaurants and bars to get the courage to participate, whatever floats your boat. The State Street Car Show is going to be on Sunday, June 1st. Please mark your calendar. Oh, sorry. One other cool thing about Dining Under the Stars is June through September, there's going to be a complimentary bike valet service, and that is going to be in partnerships with Transition Town Greater Media. So that's going to be a cool thing that's going on. And the month of June for Dining Under the Stars is actually sponsored by Visit Delco. So, June 4th is going to be a great night. It's going to include professional street chalk artists, which is a thing, a live broadcast from WMMR on our new Palm Street Park, and the Philly Fanatic is going to be on location. So, that is going to be June 4th. Make sure you come out for that. Moving on to my agenda items, this month, like every month, we need to ratify the payment of bills for March. So for the general fund, it's $515,902.07. For the liquid fuels fund, $0. For rec fund, $8,581.02. For the capital fund, $146,341.79. For a total of $670,824.88. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Please excuse the misprint. It should be for April, not March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to restate that? Please don't make me read the numbers again.
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for April 2025 in the amounts mentioned by Vice President Romaine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Romaine?
I just wanted to piggyback on your shout-out to Dining Under the Stars, that next Wednesday, if anybody's interested to see their tax dollars at work, our Pancras and Springton Music Jazz Bands will be playing.
Oh, wonderful.
So, please go check them out. They're playing, I think, starting at 6:00 and lasting all evening. And they have middle school followed by high school followed by the alumni bands.
Cool.
That's really cool. Thank you.
You might see a Gellman play.
I was going to say. Or two. How do you know that?
I was going to say, yeah. Just look up. Thank you very much, Lisa. Moving on now to community development planning, I will hand the gavel over to Vice President Romaine.
Mm-hmm.
I have several liaison announcements. Planning Commission met early this month, you know, and discussed the comprehensive plan in depth for the membership that are on there. One thing that did come up was the understanding or the remembrance that several years back in the last time the comp plan was put together, Planning Commission put together a list of wants, ideas, and things. So they're in the process of gathering that. That should be coming to us at some point, either at council level or Planning Commission Committee. But that's something that I think will be very helpful to sort of guide where we are because it'll give us a glance as to where they were 10 years ago. The Historic Archives Commission is in the process of a really remarkable project for Media's 175th birthday. They are collecting photographs. They are trying to document every property in the borough. And I believe our manager will be reaching out to everyone on council. We got an email today from the Historic Archives Commission inviting council to participate. One of the things they want is a photo of all of us and then the request that we share photos of our homes as well, so that we would take part in it as well. So that'll be coming forth. It's a pretty neat kind of thing that they're doing. The website is really, really cool. So, I'd be able to check it out. Those are my two items for, oh, CDC, I'm sorry. CDC will be dealt with in the items that I'm covering, you know, for action today. My first item of business is to authorize our solicitor to draft and advertise a mobile food vending services ordinance. We've gone back and forth on this for months. It went to CDC, it came back to council, went back to CDC, came to council. And I think we have a pretty solid plan for where we want to go with this. It's going to ensure the health, you know, department and the county is now in charge of the health ordinances. So, we are looking at a fee to permit a total of two vendors to work at the courthouse. And what we thought of as the most equitable idea would be to give them two days, one Monday and Wednesday, one Tuesday and Thursday. And there will be a fee for the permit. When the permit's applied for, the individual can select which of the two days they prefer. There will be health requirements, there will be cleanliness requirements, and there will be safety requirements. All of those will be included in the ordinance that our solicitor will be drafting. Did I miss anything? No. Okay. And I make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of authorizing our solicitor to draft and advertise a mobile food vending services ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda in your dock box was a draft of an open records policy regarding anonymous requests. As it stood currently, we didn't have any policy like this. If a request came in anonymously, we needed to honor it. This now will change to the standard that if there is no address mentioned or it's just an anonymous request, generally put together by AI, we will not need to honor it. And is that correct, Mr. Scott?
That is, I mean, that's exactly it. There's been a kind of growing presence of what appear to be bot or AI-driven right-to-no requests, and they could become really, they could really become overwhelming if you were required to fulfill them all. This, and the State Office of Open Records has advised, to put yourself in a position of denying, of being able to turn them down, you need to have a policy stating that you don't honor anonymous requests, so.
Great. Thank you. And I will make that in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting an open records policy regarding anonymous requests, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions for President Pekoff?
Thank you. Moving on now to Public Safety, Recreation, and our Civil Service Commission. Councilmember Kevin Boyer, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few announcements from REC. Once again, another successful Easter recon. Thanks to the members of REC. They did a great job. A lot of happy families, a lot of happy kids, so kudos to them and Jen and the whole crew for another great event. And I encourage anybody looking for things to do throughout the month, REC has posted some standard things like Maker Mondays and game nights, so please consult the borough website. You can see all the wonderful things that REC is doing and those will continue throughout the summer. The only legislative item I have is to ask to approve the mass gathering permit application for First Baptist Church of Media, their Vacation Bible School. That will be the week of July 14th to 18th, and that will close Third Street between Jackson and Monroe, right behind the building. This is an annual event. We discussed it in Public Safety, and it was approved, so I asked that we approve the mass gathering permit. Let me make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for First Baptist Church of Media's Vacation Bible School to be held July 14th through 18th, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM on Third Street between Jackson and Monroe Streets, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I just had one question for Karen. Do we still have, is there any interest in civil service? Anybody?
No.
No. So as far as I know, I think we still have two openings on civil service. If anybody out there is interested, we really need some people to step up and serve. Do very important things like work with the police and help us hire when we need to do that. So if you're interested, please send in your information and we'll take that when we notice. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Boyer? Hearing none, we'll move on now to personnel, environmental advisory council, and the library. Councilmember Lisa Gellman, Ms. Gellman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The EAC wants to thank residents for their participation in a successful ecotour. They are looking for feedback if anyone has anything to give. They are looking to make this an annual event. Media Library encourages you to check out their website to find out what is happening at the library. They will be closed on the upcoming Memorial Day holiday. And that concludes my liaison announcements. So, we have two openings for part-time parking enforcement officers, so I would like us to approve the hiring of Aaron Elderman as a part-time parking enforcement officer, and I offer that in motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of the hiring of Aaron, is it Aylorman or Elderman?
Looks like Ellerman.
Ellerman?
Ellerman. As a part-time parking enforcement officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I would also like to place hiring of Kanye Bean as a part-time parking enforcement officer as a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of hiring Kanye Bean as a part-time parking enforcement officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And I appreciate them stepping up to do a very important job in the borough and welcome to our staff.
Yes, and I think that fulfills the entire staff for parking enforcement, which is wonderful.
Great.
Okay. Number four, we have an ordinance number 1172 of 2025 amendment to the non-uniform pension plan ordinance to reflect change in financial institution discussed at workshop, and I offer that in a form of a motion. offer that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? This is mostly a housekeeping item, correct? It's just, we're changing banks.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The name of the institute. They've been acquired.
Right, right, yeah. So all those in favor of approving ordinance Number 1172 of 2025, the amendment to the non-uniform pension plan ordinance to reflect the change in the financial institution, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
And the opposed, please say "nay." Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Gelman?
One quick note. The library was number one on the leaderboard for donors for Delco Gives. So they got 671 donors.
Wow.
And that's number one out of over 300 organizations that participated, so.
That's fantastic. I did not know that.
If you see someone at the library, high-five them, because that's an incredible achievement.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Their well-planned book sale has really.
Yeah.
Makes that an achievement.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I will say, I will give a shout-out that they did have an honored dinner or brunch? Breakfast? They had an honoring of the volunteers for the book sale, volunteers, some of which have been there for like over 25 years, twice a year. They've had 55 book sales, and a couple of those lovely ladies have been there for almost every one of them, and it was lovely I was able to attend. It was great.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. If there are no more questions for Councilmember Gelman, we'll move on to Shade Tree Commission and zoning hearing board. Councilmember Jen Malkun. Ms. Malkun.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Just a few, just really one announcement for Shade Tree. Shade Tree was a part of hosting the first media tree spree, and that occurred, it was like really less than a month, I think it was active on Goose Chase. So Jen Metzger, again, shout-out to Jen for helping them figure that out. There were 14 active teams, 47 total teams, 124 submissions. So I think this is going to be something that is, will happen regularly. Lots of photos of people with trees and drawings, so it was, yeah, really great community engagement to build awareness and education and value toward our shade trees in the borough. And just a reminder that Shade Tree will have a table at Dining Under the Stars September 17th. I believe there will be trees being given away. Fall is the best time to plant a bare-root tree, and bare-root trees are much larger than your regular trees that come in root ball or bundled, so that's one advantage. I don't have any other announcements. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilmember Malkun? Hearing none. I want to give a shout-out on my own for everyone here. On behalf of our junior council member who's not here, Lydia Petrucci has been, you know, a wonderful addition to council this year. The next time we meet in legislative session, she will be a high school graduate. So, yeah, it's going to be sad to wish her well, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to honor her. And I'll be in touch, but I just wanted to give her a shout-out and thank her. She will, you know, be welcome to come back at any point, and what that means is that anyone in the borough who has a junior or senior at Pencrest High School, or any other school for that matter, could be Cardinal O'Hara or other private school, that is interested in serving as our junior council member, that term will run from September through June of next year, and we will open up those applications, and those applications are welcome to be submitted through our website. So thank you again, Lydia, and hopefully we'll have a proper send-off at some point. Now we're up to our second opportunity for public comment and privilege of the floor. Are there any emails that have come in, Ms. Repino?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Brian Hall, 117 North Edgemont Street, here at Media. Belated words of gratitude, all those who are involved in response to the recent weather events.